Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we begin with our open study session, and this is in regards to the mayoral vacancy. Anybody want to begin?
Uh, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes, it's, uh, you know, after going through many hours of, of, uh, research on this, um, I, I truly believe we should have had a special meeting the week after the mayor's, uh, passing. Uh, it's imperative that we shall appoint a mayor. That's exactly what our, our charter says. And I don't want to wait the thirty days. Um, that'll take away our options. Uh, and, uh, we should also add that, as far as I'm concerned, to the agenda today. We need not put this out for, for the public to, uh, sign up for. It's been done like this, uh, twice before without, uh, having to send it out. And, uh, I believe it should be on our, our, uh, agenda tonight. And I move forward, uh, at the time of the, uh, uh, approving the, uh, the minutes or the agenda that I will, I actually ask to put it on tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Conston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I reviewed the applicable charter provisions, and I think it's, I agree with Councilman Muscat, it's imperative. However, people that, uh, want to apply can apply. I think they can do it through the, uh, Personnel Office or through the city clerk. And we should have some assigned documents, something indicating their background education and so forth. Um, I don't know if Councilman Muscat meant that, uh, you know, would have to be a member of the council or, or what exactly he meant, but, um...
Councilman, no. What, what I'm saying is it, 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 there's no provisions in our charter that says we have to put it out for the public to sign up for, okay? We can pick anyone we want, but you don't have to broadcast it or put it on the social media or the newspaper to, 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 to do this, okay? This is, this is up to city council. It does not have to be a council member at all. But we need to do this ASAP, okay? And, uh, it's, it's very important right along. It's very important that we pick a separate council person.
I agree, but yeah, no, I think we, we have to make it, uh, uh, advertise it and make it...
You don't have to.
Apply available to the public.
Our charter does not say we have to advertise it.
Make sure we get the best candidate.
But it does, doesn't say that, Councilman. It does not say we have to advertise it.
Um, I'm gonna ask Matt Shank, cause he gave me some insight on this. And I think he sent us all a, um, email. Would you like to weigh in on that, sir?
Yeah, there, there's, there is no requirement as to the process the council uses to fill the vacancy. It is up to council as a body to decide how to do that, is my reading of the charter, as consistent with what Councilman Muscat just indicated.
Right, but there's no requirement that it not be advertised. We've advertised every other position.
It's, it's at our discretion.
It is, it is a wide open process. It is the process as the majority of council members decide the process to be, um, is consistent with the language of the charter. There's no procedure that you are prohibited from using outside of, you know, something that would violate other laws. Um, and there's no process that is identified within the charter that you should follow to fill any of the vacancies.
Councilman Abella?
The only condition they have on the charter is that it be a qualified applicant. And on that, they leave that up to us as a council to decide, to determine who's a qualified applicant. In addition to that, they have to be a city resident, but beyond that, there's nothing else. We could pick one today. We could pick one a month from now. We could pick one from within the city hall. We could pick one from outside city hall. These are all left up to us as a council. So, uh, for Robert, uh, Councilman Conston, um, it's, it's at the end of the day, it's up to us. And in my personal opinion, I think we shouldn't prolong this too long. Uh, no matter who it happens to be that we all vote on, uh, democratically, you know, whether it's tonight. I prefer tonight personally. I think we should pick somebody and let's move on. I don't believe personally this process should be just prolonged and prolonged and prolonged. And, um, then you have a lot of lame duck type of situation, and I don't want to go through that personally.
No, I agree, but, but, and I, I think it is at the end of the day up to us to fill the vacancy. But I just, we, we, we need to know, uh, background information on who's ever applying. But I'll leave it at that. Everybody stated their position, or, or three of us have or four of us have. So, thank you.
The council members like to wait. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat?
Uh, qualified personnel for elected officials only means that you've been a resident of the city for two years and you're a registered voter. Uh, unfortunately, you know, fortunately, at least for me, it is. No education requirements are needed. Cause I, I, the only thing I learned went to was, was high school and trade school. Uh, so degrees are not mandatory. And, um, like I said, uh, you have to be a resident of the city for two years and that you, uh, live in the city and that you're a registered voter. And that's the only qualifications that's needed to hold an elected or appointed position for this position.
Dad helped write the charter. He's still around, so it's, that's what it says.
I have, um, reached out to the Attorney General today to give us an unbiased opinion. We did get four opinions from three different attorneys. One attorney actually changed their opinion after they wrote it for us. And there seems to be a question of who's able to vote and who's not able to vote. It's, I've been told both ways, and I don't feel it's right we take a vote tonight on that alone because somebody might not vote or somebody might vote in error. So, we've got to get that clarified before we can even begin to move forward. And like I said, we've gotten two, you know, four different opinions, and they're not the same.
Right, I, you know, it's a, it's a critically important decision. It's a unexpected, uh, situation. But, you know, that it, it, it's a very important vote, and I, I, I think we should be able to get all the information we, we can get, that's all.
I, I don't want to wait two more weeks.
I'm sorry, we got Councilman Abella? Go ahead, please.
Well, I just want to say that the longer we wait on this thing, and we keep waiting for more and more opinions, you can get totally different opinions. I mean, I'm not an attorney, and from what I read, absolutely positively, we can make a decision. And as far as, uh, the opinion, as far as whether council members can vote or not, the key issue is whether there was a financial interest or not. And, and to me, in this case, there is no financial interest. The only thing that you could argue there's a financial interest is potential additional income. Because obviously, the income that is given to city council members is quite a bit low. And then income given to, uh, a potential mayor, uh, whether it's pro temp or just, you know, obviously until November, is obviously quite a bit more. That maybe can be argued as a financial interest, but beyond that, I don't see no financial interest. So to me, a council member can vote. The only thing on there is, in the charter, it is left up to us. And in the past, during the treasurer's, um, position appointment, um, Councilman, uh, Robert Conston, who had run for that position, was not allowed to vote at the time. So if that's the precedence, uh, we're gonna follow, then we just continue following that way. If we're gonna go by the charter, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, but from what I've read, I believe personally council numbers can vote. But, but I, I don't know if we want to keep waiting on this thing, do we keep getting opinions because, you know...
I would like to get it wrapped up by the next meeting, um, and I would like to wait at least a few days to see if they get back to us, because like I said, I'm not comfortable with the opinions we have because they're all clashing. And I'm, I'm just not comfortable. And Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
I'm gonna make a motion uh, to put it on, and I'm gonna let the council decide of which way we go. That's the only fair way to do this. And I, and after looking at the charter much closely, much more closely, uh, for this, I think we were wrong in not letting Councilman Conston vote for himself. It's no different than voting for yourself as a council chair or pro temp. Um, that could be construed also as a financial gain because you make more money than the other person. And who's to say we're gonna pick a council person anyway? We may pick Joe Schmuckatelli that lives on whatever street, okay?
I like that guy. Good guy.
Uh, you know, we should let the coun, the council as a whole decide how we're gonna handle this. And I will make the motion to do that, to do so. If it passes, fine. If it doesn't, then we'll go to plant B. And, and hopefully, we'll have a special meeting so we can get the ball rolling here, because I, I think it's necessary. Uh, the ship needs to have a captain, a permanent captain.
Yes. Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Conston.
I'm, I'm just gonna say, it'll be a while before you hear from the Attorney General, I believe. I hope I'm wrong, but there are a lot of communities with, uh, I know the, um, I know two people up there, the, the Solicitor General and then, uh, the, the deputy who's been there forever. But, um, I, I think it's clear that all the council members vote. I think it requires four votes. And, uh, I agree, we should build a position as soon as possible. Just, I, I think we should be able to have some background on whoever the applicants are.
Well, we sure can't vote right now, so we're gonna have to wait till the council, uh, we're in session.
Right.
Council Chair?
Maybe just at least for the audience's, um, perspective. And, uh, I, I think since both of the attorneys that gave us opinions are here, maybe we could give, give each and every one of them, or both of them, I should say, in this case, maybe just three minutes, so it's gotta be capped, um, to give us their opinion. So at least the audience and the citizens who are, who we are elected to vote on their behalf can at least know what our thought process is based on the opinions that we received from the two attorneys that are either currently employed with the city or, uh, whatever the other situation is. Either way, we could get those two opinions, at least publicly. Because a lot of the residents are listening to this, do not have access to the same stuff that we read. Would you be okay with that? Maybe each one of them can give us a three-minute synopsis? We can't hear you, Council Chair.
Okay. Okay, um, we did have four opinions by three different attorneys, and all three attorneys are here.
I'm sorry, three attorneys. My, my apologies. Apologize.
Um, so, all right, who wants to go first on this? You have three minutes?
Well, the first one came from Mr. Roberts, so I think he should go first.
I, I think I've already summarized most of mine, so the only other question was also referenced by Councilman Conston about whether or not to require four votes, and under seven point one of the charter, the official acts of the council require four votes. Um, we did not do a detailed analysis on the question of pecuniary interest, and so that might require additional work if council were to vote quickly.
Oh, Mr. Roberts, did you want to go ahead for your three minutes?
Yes, primarily the, uh, opinion I was asked to give was on the process for filling the vacancy. Uh, there was an issue of, um, whether a councilman could vote for themselves to fill that if they were a, a potential candidate. Um, I gave my opinion based upon Roberts' Rules of Order. Uh, it was then brought to my attention subsequently that, uh, six point nine of the city charter provides the council, uh, adopts their own rules of procedure. Uh, frankly, I, I don't work a lot with the city council, and I don't do a lot of work with the charter, so I was unaware of that provision. Uh, when that was brought to my attention, uh, it was also brought to my attention that there had been a prior decision of the council that, um, would prohibit, uh, the person under consideration to fill a position from voting for themselves. Based upon that, I deferred to that opinion. However, uh, in reading the, uh, charter provision, uh, myself, I believe it's consistent with Roberts' Rules of Order. And I, I don't agree with the past interpretation of, I was led to believe the council had given it. Um, I do think the better rule is that it's, it's a pecuniary interest that's not, uh, enjoyed by the other members of the, of the council. In other words, if you were awarding a contract for, say, a painting contract for city hall, and one of the council members owned a painting company, um, and they were bidding on the job, that person would have a pecuniary interest that is not shared by the other council members, and they should, uh, abstain from voting because they have that pecuniary interest. That is not the case when you're talking about this type of an appointment. Um, everybody, if they are appointed, would enjoy whatever pecuniary benefit you would receive from that work, uh, that additional work, the new position. Similarly, anybody outside the council that's appointed by the council to, uh, fulfill the term of the mayor until the next election would also enjoy that, that same benefit. So this is not the type of pecuniary interest, um, that I think is contemplated in that abstention requirement. And, um, I would urge council not to adopt that stricter reading on the, uh, on the charter.
Did you take a look at the Geis case from Taylor? Because there was, there was a case that went to the Court of Appeals. It's Geis versus Mullner, and the Court of Appeals came out on the other side saying that voting for your own office is a pecuniary interest. But they ended up not having to actually do a detailed analysis of the issue because the council ended up ratifying the vote. And so the vote in question ended up not mattering because the vote was ratified without that pecuniary vote. But there is a case out there that interprets a very similar charter provision from Taylor. And so that's why I did want to do some additional looking because I, I don't disagree with a lot of what you said in the analysis of that case. Seems to be an outlier, but it is also on point.
I believe that Mr. Roberts is muted right now and wanted to respond to Mr. Shank.
I, I just, I just indicated that I would respond, but I was muted. Uh, um, I was, I, I did not read that case, no. Uh, my, uh, opinion is based upon my reading of Roberts' Rules of Order, which is very consistent with the language, uh, used in the city charter, uh, for the abstention requirement. Um, as you described the case out of Taylor, it sounds to me that, um, all that was moot anyway. Uh, I do think the, uh, analysis used in the Roberts' Rules of Order in evaluating, uh, the requirement for abstention is a better policy, um, to adopt. And if the city, uh, charter provides council the ability to make their own rules and procedures, uh, then I do believe it's up, as a matter of policy, um, I think adopting the, the rule as interpreted in Roberts' Rules of Order certainly makes more sense. Uh, I, I think if you get overly restrictive on the interpretation of a pecuniary interest, uh, you could have some unintended consequences in the future.
And Council Chair, if I may, uh, Mr. Shank, was that a published or unpublished opinion of Michigan Court of Appeals?
Um, I can send you the, the link to it.
I'm real familiar with that case. That was Doug Geist, who was a state rep.
Right, uh, and, and, and I would assume that it was an unpublished decision.
Yeah, and it was not, that was not determinative one way or the other.
Right.
I'm getting the case up now.
Yep, you could. So, um, I guess Council Chair, if I, if I may comment, thank you. Um, I sent out two, uh, two emails. One was something that I started to prepare, uh, before I knew that Mr. Roberts was preparing an opinion. Uh, so I did send out, uh, that opinion, uh, which basically, I think, clarified a number of issues that I don't know that are disputed at this point. Uh, so I'm not going to address those issues, namely, the process, essentially the fact that we need to have, um, someone selected, the person selected, uh, in general, just needs to fill the requirements of section four point two of the, of the charter, which would be the residency and qualified elector. It does not have to be a member of the council. And also, it pertains to, uh, the duties that you, as council chair, now end up performing, um, in terms of mayor pro temp, uh, as opposed to you actually filling the vacancy automatically or otherwise. Um, but I want to address this voting issue because unfortunately, I just was able to send out an email at five thirty-seven today. Uh, and I don't know that anyone had an opportunity, so essentially, the, the email was consistent with what Mr. Roberts has, uh, has stated, uh, in general. And also is based on a conversation I had with Adam Dato, who was corporation counsel back in nineteen ninety-two, uh, when Joe Kaczynski, uh, sometimes referred to as Joe Kaczynski Junior, although technically I don't think it was a junior, but the younger Joe Kaczynski ended up being, uh, voted in as, uh, treasurer to fill the vacancy of, caused by the resignation of Rick Plouecki or Richard Plouecki. And at that time, he voted for himself. So there's actually an older precedent that essentially says that voting for yourself, uh, is allowed. Um, Mr. Dato's opinion was consistent, uh, with some of the reasoning that Mr. Roberts has already, uh, shared. So I don't see the need to go into any detail with regard to that. But that, it really comes down to the idea that a financial interest is contemplated by the charter is not an interest, uh, merely an appointment. And essentially, one of the things that I thought about was the idea that if you use the rule that restrictively, namely, if you said that the prohibition caught any time where someone would end up potentially having any financial benefit, uh, the council chair, uh, no one could end up voting for someone for council chair. They couldn't vote for themselves as council chair because they would earn an extra few thousand dollars to end up being the council chair. They wouldn't be able to vote to approve the city budget, even though that's required by the charter, because essentially, they have an interest in the city budget that's different from the interest of the residents. So in my mind, um, that's too restrictive of an interpretation. And I would note that Roberts' Rules of Order has been around for a very, very, very long time. So the context for, uh, this interpretation or this area of interpretation, um, I think that the, um, the, those who framed the city charter were aware of this rule within Roberts' Rules of Order, and that therefore Roberts' Rules of Order would be very persuasive in this context. So I believe that everyone should be able to vote who's on the charter, or on, I'm sorry, on the council, including someone who, uh, is potentially going to end up being appointed, uh, based on that interpretation. And I think that the interpretation that was used during the fall and applied to, uh, Councilman Constan was too restrictive. So, uh, with that, I think unless anyone has any further questions, um, I believe that, uh, uh, I have nothing further to say. Thank you.
So I did speak with Ruth Canfield today, because I figured if anybody could know what was going on, it would be her, because she's, you know, the Canfields have been in the city forever since the beginning of time. Um, and she did say that you find out who is interested. And she did say, yes, you would vote if you were, you know, I would vote on it. So that was basically what she had to say. She said they've always went out to find out who is interested first. Councilman Conston?
Uh, yeah, briefly, I, I, I think, you know, we're saying different sides of the same thing. We all agree the position has to be filled as soon as possible. We all agree that it's, of course, everybody has a vote. I mean, councils vote to fill, uh, vacancies all the time. And, you know, often, one of the parties is, is a member of the council. I think that's clear. The issue is just, um, how much, uh, you know, if we want people to submit a letter of interest or their name to the city clerk or if we, you know, and how we're gonna do it, are we gonna, um, open the meeting and then everyone just nominate somebody and votes? Till somebody gets four votes, or, you know, we, we need to think that procedure out?
Yeah, I, I have no problem scheduling, um, a special election or a special meeting next week so we can figure this out. Um, ma'am clerk, how would you, like, I mean, what is your thought? Did you wanna put a notice out to the public?
Well, I did attempt to put that on the agenda, and you didn't want it on this agenda, so it's ready to go. Um, I can put it in the paper. We have the timeline for that. I have it right here. Uh, we can put it in the press and guide. We can, um, like I did for council, the council vacancy. I would put it on the city website. I'm sure John Zadikan would put it on, um, the Facebook page. I even thought maybe we could put it on Michigan Municipal League, although they have to be a resident of Dearborn Heights. But it's up to, it's up to the councils. Um, I work for the council, so I would take your direction.
Also, we have Councilman Tom. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wensel?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, just for the people that are listening, uh, very quickly, from one of the attorneys here, um, you know, explain really quickly the process, uh, who, who takes over for the mayor after his death and the title of position. And to clarify, is there any kind of stipulation of a thirty-day, uh, period where if nothing, no action is, that for, uh, the acting ma-
Hey, if, if I may?
Go ahead.
Um, the letter I, I was asked to provide addressed that very topic. Um, it's my understanding that the, uh, the death of the mayor created a vacancy in office. Uh, the vacancy is filled by a majority vote of the city council. Uh, it does not have to be anybody in particular. Uh, it doesn't have to be a member of council. It can be anybody chosen by council. There's no timeframe provided. Um, in the interim, in my opinion, the best reading of the charter, in the interim, prior to the appointment of such a person, uh, the temporary absence of the mayor, uh, would be filled by the, uh, mayor pro temp provision. Uh, the mayor pro temp, uh, does not occupy the office of mayor, but the mayor pro temp fulfills the functions of the mayor. And, well, most of them, there's a couple of exceptions, but fulfills the, the day-to-day functions of the mayor until such time as the replacement is, um, available. The mayor pro temp position is, I think, contemplated to be a temporary position. Um, the more or less permanent filling of the vacancy is done by, uh, the city council. Uh, again, it would be somebody that would be chosen by the majority of the council. Um, I, I do not believe it requires four votes. I think it's a majority of the council, uh, present at any meeting. Um, I, I think that's borne out by, uh, the wording of the motion to fulfill the vacancy as opposed to the wording of the, uh, requirements for, um, passing an ordinance. Uh, one specifically says for members, the other, the, uh, filling of the vacancy uh, just refers to a majority of the council. Um, typically, that type of language- Um, typically, that type of language is interpreted just to be the majority of the council present. But again, you can adopt your own rules in that regard. Um, but I, I do believe uh council should consider what the job of mayor entails and pick the most qualified person that you can agree upon. Um, to that extent, it may be prudent to um seek some information about a variety of candidates. Um, it's not required. You can pick whoever you want. You can pick whenever you want. Uh, but I do think it would be best for the city to pick the most qualified person you can all agree upon and to do it as quickly as possible.
So Mark, you're saying, you're saying definitely that there's no thirty day uh period?
No, the thirty day, the thirty day period arises, i- it's more of a description of the uh limitations on the mayor pro tem position. Um, the thirty day, the first thirty days, the mayor pro tem is acting, uh fulfilling the duties of the mayor. There's some limitations for the first thirty days, dealing with appointments primarily. Um, but that has nothing to do with filling the vacancy in office. Filling the vacancy in office has no timeframes. Uh, the only timeframes discussed in that provision are that the person selected by council, uh, once they're approved, would serve until the next uh general election in the city and until the person elected at that next election assumes office. So that would be, your appointment would serve until basically the next elected official is, takes office.
So all the attorneys present, they agree upon that? There's no, there's no, no thirty day limit for this? All, all three of you agree that?
There's no limit. There is a provision in the charter that says upon thirty days, the mayor pro tem can be entitled to additional compensation if the mayor pro tem continues to serve. So if council doesn't appoint somebody else and the mayor pro tem continues for an indefinite period, the council can authorize additional compensation equivalent to the prorata share of the mayor's salary.
Yes, and I, I, I totally agree with that. My point was.
I'm sorry, point of order. We've got Mr. Miyaki that's next.
Thank you. And it's, it's, and I would only uh add a, a slight tweak to that to what Mr. Shank has ended up indicating, namely that it is as may be allowed by the council. In other words, the council has discretion whether or not to give additional compensation. Council may feel that it's unnecessary under the circumstances, for example. Uh, I would also note one other thing in terms of the uh appointment. The person will serve until the election uh of the successor at the next general election, which would be in November and thereafter, but there will need to be two elections. Uh, one election will be for the period between approximately November of twenty twenty-one until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. And one election will be for the new full term starting January first of twenty twenty-two for the four years. So there will need to be two elections for mayor in November of twenty twenty-one. Um, just like if all of you recall when Rashida Tla- uh Tlaib and Brenda Jones ended up uh basically running and then we had Brenda Jones, I believe, was the Congresswoman for a very short period of time.
Eight weeks.
Lead was, so.
Yeah, for the John Conyers seed.
Correct.
Um, I think we do need to get another special meeting right away, um, because it sounds like we all agree that we want to move forward and get this over with. I mean, it's, it's, we're just hanging in limbo right now. Um, can we agree to have a special meeting next Tuesday to finalize whatever we decide?
I'm still gonna make the motion to put it on the agenda tonight.
And, and Council Chair, if I could make one, one point, please. Um, I know, uh, obviously Mayor Canfield appointed me a corp counsel way back in June of ninety-nine. However, uh, the process that was used to fill her vacancy uh did not involve like an extensive uh process. Uh, it was a selection that took place rather, rather quickly. Um, and that's how Mayor Pletko ended up being appointed to uh fill that vacancy. So while it might be a, a matter of prudence or a matter of practicality, something where you would want to um seek applicants, it's not required and hasn't necessarily been, been done in the past consistently by this body.
I recall that I was on the council when, uh, and it was a unanimous vote.
I can't hear you, Mayor Pro Tem.
You're muted.
It's my turn?
Yep.
I didn't hear what you said. Okay, I didn't hear what you said. I do want to say that I did, I know I forwarded it to, um, the council members, but um, Mr. Miyaki is right, but just so that you know, that was published for mayor, the, the mayoral and the clerk vacancy when um, Mayor Canfield retired as well as Clerk Robbins, I think it was. There was on a review of the candidates and then there, it was rather quick. It was published on December twenty-first. They had a study session on January sixth. And there were two candidates, just so that you know that that was published at that time as well.
Judy Kozinski was appointed.
That's correct.
We should do a quick one like that. Um, I don't want to be accused of not allowing other people to come in that may be interested and may not be in this meeting today, not expecting this to happen. That's for transparency purposes. Um, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just want to echo, um, my comment about it may be prudent to, you know, review some potential candidates is just that it may be prudent. It is not a requirement. Um, and whatever has been done in the past, it's not a requirement. The charter is silent on the procedure and I think all the attorneys agree on that. It's, it's silent on the procedure to be followed by council. It really is a decision of the council and it could be different from time to time based upon what, uh, what the council's beliefs are and what needs to be done. So
Thank you.
It doesn't necessarily need to be consistent with past processes either.
Okay, um. How would the council like to proceed? I, I personally, for transparency reasons, would like to do it next week and give people a chance to weigh in.
I agree.
We can't vote. This is a study session.
No, but I mean, do we agree to vote on it in the actual meeting?
Well, let someone make the motion and we can vote on it there. Uh, we have our, 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 our uh way of doing things. We can bring up a motion and, and we can vote on it. And that way we cover all the bases.
Well, it's, yeah, it's not on this agenda, but I, I think we should have the special meeting and then we can, you know, give five days.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to put it on the agenda to have a special meeting.
Right.
So.
I'm going with the flow. I don't care at this point.
We, we. Chair can set a special, uh, a special meeting for this coming Tuesday.
Well, let's vote on it in a regular ci- the city council meeting.
Um, we need to open it up to public comment and we're getting, we're running way behind. Um, so at this time, let's open it up to public comment. I'm gonna limit it to two minutes because we're so far behind. Does anybody want to weigh in on this at all at this time? Okay, I think.
So here, Abdul Haq does. He's waving.
Oh, okay. In the future, I'm gonna ask everybody to use the hand on the thing. I can't see. Yeah, because it makes it easier for me to find you. Go ahead. Sir?
You gotta get unmuted.
You have to do it on your end, Mr. Abdul.
Okay, I did. I did. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, I think it is only fair for all the city council members to vote. It's not fair, you know, to prevent them from voting for themselves. And I hope that we can do this as soon as possible. Publish it, have other people apply because there might be some candidates who are more qualified than everybody to be mayor. And I hope this to be fast. I would have expected this to be the next day when uh Pletko passed. Because if the president of the United States dies, within minutes, the vice president swears in. And we have been without, you know, mayor for a couple of weeks and I hope that we move as fast as possible to fill this vacancy. And I wish you the best of luck.
Nice. Council Chair, you need to speak up. We can't hear you.
Next, we have Leslie Winless. I've unmuted you or asked you to be unmuted?
Yep, I'm here. I was just waiting for you to call my name. So I just had, um, I just had two questions that I didn't get clarification on in the uh study session. Um, so you're doing the mayor job right now, but you're also going to act as city council chair. Are you gonna be paid one salary or for both positions? Um, the other thing I wanted to know is, um, the mayor can't vote on the vacant city council meeting. Um, what was the determination if you're acting mayor as far as will you be voting on the open seat in the next meeting?
I will be voting because I am ta- I'm technically mayor pro tem and city council chair. Unfortunately, on both sides, it's a really tough situation to be in, but I'm mayor pro tem, not mayor at this time. So that's what allows me to still vote as a city council.
Okay, and then the first question, will you be paid as mayor and city council chair or just one?
As of right now, I've been paid city council.
Um, do you know how long that will continue or it will be until someone is appointed?
That's a lot of questions that we still don't have answers to. That's why I reached out to the Attorney General because I just felt we needed a more solid answer from an independent person that's not with the city.
Okay, so do you think you need to answer to those questions before you guys can vote tonight to add it to the agenda? Okay. Okay, that was all my questions.
Okay, next we have for better, Z H.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mike Shahadi from Dearborn Heights. Um, personally, I would like to see someone from the city council to be voted in as a mayor. Um, you guys are all very familiar with the city day-to-day operation for us to bring someone from the outside to train him or to tell him what needs to be done. There's no need to keep dragging it for another week and another week and let's vote on it next week. Um, there are a lot of pending uh work needs to be done in the city and we need a mayor in place. Thank you.
Is lacking right now in the city. I have been performing the duties, the day-to-day duties. Um, we are not without a mayor. We are without a permanent mayor at this time. Um, nothing, you know, things are going out. Nothing has stopped whatsoever. Uh, we have Dana Parrish, please go ahead, please.
Hey, Madam Chair, um, city council members. I was very uh upset to hear that the mayor passed, especially COVID. It's a very uh serious situation going on in our country right now. Um, one thing that we need to keep in mind after this business gets taken care of and that is there needs someone already addressed this point and that is that we need to have a line of succession in our charter so that just like in our country, as someone said, um, we need to know clearly if something happens to one of our members or executive branch, we need to clearly have a, a delineation of who is in charge next. Madam Chair, hats off to you for stepping up and doing what the, what the charter says, but it looks like there's a lot of fog. I've listened to three, two, three attorneys talking about different things and you've had four different opinions, which to me, that tells me a lot about legal opinions. You pay a, a, an attorney, ask him an opinion. It's two attorneys in the same office and Mr. Roberts is kind of smiling because you pay an attorney uh in the same office for an opinion and he'll give you a different opinion. Um, the problem is if it isn't in black and white and sometimes even if it is, it's gonna be a different opinion. So it'd be great if we could work on, when we can, obviously, a charter revision. I know it's been one of the things that's close to a lot of our council and women. We need to get on top of that because this is an area that's really lacking. Unfortunately, now with the passing of our mayor, it's, it's, should be one of the things at the top of our list. Thank you very much. I'm very sorry for the family of uh passing our mayor. Thank you.
Unfortunately, last February, I had a study session uh to start a charter review committee, but apparently it didn't go very far. Um, I knew our charter was very gray. It wasn't black and white and there was a lot to be desired in how it's interpreted. Um, and unfortunately, that's why I tried to do it. Go ahead, Councilman Constan.
Well, yeah, I think all the attorneys said the same thing, that it, it'll take four votes, that all the council members can vote. It needs to be done as soon as possible. I didn't hear and the, the, the charter is clear on the requirements. That's all I have to say.
Want to, are we done with the study session? Do we want to go into the regular meeting? Council Muscat?
I moved that we end the study session and go into open session.
Sorry.
Okay, at this time, we have ended our study session.